Merry Christmas, 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 and joy to us. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, sugar. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, babe. The ones that look like Santa Claus, Christmas trees and bells and stars. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, babe. Now, Christmas cookies are a special treat. The more I bake, the more I eat, and sometimes I can't get myself to stop. Sometimes I'll wait till he's asleep, and I'll take the ones that he didn't eat, and I'll put those little sprinkly things on the top. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, sugar. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, babe.
Good afternoon. I would like to call the regular meeting for the Board of Commissioners December 2nd, 2024, meeting to order. I would like to congratulate Commissioner Martin Sharp and Lovick, and welcome to our organizational meeting. If you would please stand and join me in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we will start with the organizational part of the board meeting. Our first order of business is the election of the chair for the upcoming 2024-2025 Board of Commissioner term. North Carolina general statutes provide that each year at the first meeting in December, the board shall choose a chair and a vice chair. Voting can be done by voice, by ballot, by raising hands. Typically, the board has voted by ballot, and your clerk is passing a ballot out. If the board can please take a motion to vote to determine the method of voting for the chair at this time. Do I have a motion?
Motion to vote by ballot, please.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. If you will fill out your ballot, and this is for the chair, and if you will also sign it, we'll come around and collect it. While you're doing that, so we can do the vice chair maybe at the same time, is there a motion to vote on the vice chair by ballot?
Motion by ballot for vice chair.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. If you will fill out your ballot, and this is for the chair, and if you will also sign it, we'll come around and collect it. While you're doing that, so we can do the vice chair maybe at the same time, is there a motion to vote on the vice chair by ballot?
Motion by ballot for vice chair.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we'll pass that out as well, and do both. And sign both chair and vice chair, please. I guess, please. Okay. I think I've got this. 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 I sure do like those Christmas cookies, sugar. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, babe. The ones that look like Santa Claus, Christmas trees and bells and stars. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, babe. Now, Christmas cookies are a special treat. The more I bake, the more I eat, and sometimes I can't get myself to stop. Sometimes I'll wait till he's asleep, and I'll take the ones that he didn't eat, and I'll put those little sprinkly things on the top. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, sugar. I sure do like those Christmas cookies, babe. Good afternoon. I would like to call the regular meeting for the Board of Commissioners, December 2nd, 2024, meeting to order. I would like to congratulate Commissioner Martin Sharp and Lovick, and welcome to our organizational meeting. If you would please stand and join me in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we will start with the organizational part of the board meeting. Our first order of business is the election of the chair for the upcoming 2024-2025 Board of Commissioner term. North Carolina general statutes provide that each year at the first meeting in December, the board shall choose a chair and a vice chair. Voting can be done by voice, by ballot, by raising hands. Typically, the board has voted by ballot, and your clerk is passing a ballot out. If the board can please take a motion to vote to determine the method of voting for the chair at this time. Do I have a motion?
Motion to vote by ballot, please.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. If you will fill out your ballot, and this is for the chair, and if you will also sign it, we'll come around and collect it. While you're doing that, so we can do the vice chair maybe at the same time, is there a motion to vote on the vice chair by ballot?
Motion by ballot for vice chair.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we'll pass that out as well, and do both. And sign both chair and vice chair, please. I guess, 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 please. I think I've calculated correctly. So for the chairman for the upcoming year, we had four, for Commissioner Smith, and three for Commissioner Sharp, so it will be Commissioner Smith, and then seven for Dr. Connect for vice chair. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The third order of business that needs to be conducted is the board needs to adopt a resolution fixing the time, date, and place for regular meetings. The resolution has been provided in your agenda packet. It covers where the commissioners will hold their regular meetings throughout the year, which will also be published in the Sanford Herald after it's adopted. At this point, we are still rotating between the McSwain Center and the Civic Center, and in the resolution, the board has already addressed the board retreat and next year's December organizational meeting to remain at 12:00, and we have kept the time at 6:00 PM. If there aren't any changes, if I can have a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. And then the last order of business is the board to approve the official bonds for the upcoming year. North Carolina law requires that the board approve and adopt bonds for the sheriff in the amount of $25,000, the register of deeds in the amount of $50,000, every other officer in the county that provides faithful performance of his or her duties, including the tax administrator, in the amount of $100,000, and finance officer in the amount of $1 million. And at this time, if I can have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you very much, and I will turn this over to the chairman.
Thank you, Madam Barrister. Next item on the agenda, actually, I'll stand. You have the rest, the remainder of the agenda in front of you. Is there any additional agenda items to add before we take our photograph? Any changes to the agenda?
Can I make a motion to pull D and E from the consent agenda?
Items D and E from the consent agenda, that's 4D and 4E.
Correct.
And we'll place those under old business. Item 7C and item 7D.
Thank you.
Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, if there's any discussion, we're removing items 4D and E from consent agenda to old business as items 7C and 7D. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. Now, next is to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. Now, getting back on the agenda, we're going to have our annual board photograph, so if we'd all move forward to the stage, and we will be placed by Ben McCleary is in charge.
And this is our first annual.
I have to commend the clerk for making it a note that we have not had a group photograph of the board, so that's our first annual, and I guess we're going to do this from now until eternity, hopefully. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing for revolving loan fund to Brick Capital Community Development Corporation. Mr. Kerry Bashir.
And I can just give a brief introduction. So the county established the revolving loan fund from a previous Golden Leaf Economic Development project. In 2019, the fund policy was amended to include loans for low-income and affordable housing. Brick Capital Community Development Corporation requested a loan in the amount of $200,000 in 2021, in which the county granted with a 3% interest rate. Brick Capital has sent the attached, well, it's in the agenda, letter requesting an extension of the loan, so the county is looking to approve that loan with a 6% interest rate for three years. So this is the public hearing, and we don't, we are not asking for action on this item until the next meeting, and Mr. Bashal is here if you have any questions or would like to provide any more information on that.
Please, sir.
Thank you. It's been a little while since I've been before the Board of Commissioners here, but I appreciate the opportunity. Again, I'm Kerry Bashal, I'm the Executive Director of Brick Capital Communities Development Corporation. For those of you who are new to the Board of Commissioners, congratulations, and if I can, let me just speak briefly about what it is that we do. We, first of all, are an affordable housing developer, and by affordable housing, I never waste the opportunity to define what we mean by affordable housing. HUD defines affordable housing as a household, any household, spending no more than 30% of their income towards housing-related costs. Doesn't matter if you're making minimum wage or a millionaire, as long as you're not spending more than that 30%, that housing is affordable to you. The reason why housing typically, when we talk about affordable housing, it means those that are low and moderate income, is because the market does not cater to those families that need housing that is affordable to them if they are only a low and moderate income housing or income family. So we have to be purposeful about creating housing opportunities for even those who are in the low and moderate income category there. So when I say affordable housing, that is what I mean by affordable housing. We are creating intentional housing opportunities affordable to those families so that they are spending no more than 30% of their income towards housing-related costs. In addition to being a housing developer, we're also a HUD-approved housing counseling agency. We have one of our housing counselors here, Sharon Reed, who is a HUD-certified housing counselor. We, by housing counseling, we provide housing education, homebuyers' education classes. We do so on a bimonthly basis. In fact, we have a class coming up this Saturday to where we intentionally help first-time homebuyers navigate the homebuying process, is what our housing counseling is there for. We also do foreclosure prevention and eviction prevention through our housing counseling services as well. We are also a property manager. We manage some units both here in Lee County and in Chatham County. Those units, most of those units are considered supportive housing. By supportive housing, we mean that we are, we go above and beyond what maybe a typical property manager would do besides collecting rents and handling maintenance issues, because many of our tenants are underrepresented groups, and by that I mean those who are homeless, those that are fleeing domestic violence, those who have physical or mental disabilities. And so we provide a certain amount of case management services that goes along with our tenants to ensure that they're receiving the proper supportive services that they need to be successful. And the last thing that we do, and more recently, a service that we've started doing, is we're also a case management agency specifically for those experiencing homelessness. We participate in two different programs. One is from HUD directly that we get funded, that is meant for those who are considered chronically homeless, and HUD defines chronically homeless as having spent 12 months or longer in a place not meant for human habitation. So there is a case management program that comes with a case manager along with rental assistance, a rental subsidy with that program. We also participate in another program that started just this year by the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, INCOR. They are funding a program that's known as Back at Home, and that is for those experiencing homelessness, but in a more general term of homelessness, and that is also a rental subsidy program as well, and that comes with case management. And so that's briefly what Brick Capital does, but specifically, the reason why I'm here today is to talk about the revolving loan fund. As Whitney mentioned, we had received some funds from the, the commissioners approved a fund back in 2021. It was a three-year fund through the county's revolving loan fund, and it was intended to help us create housing within the community. And so on the letter that you should have in front of you, I kind of spelled out what we've done with the funds over the past three years. We built from the ground up 10 single-family homes that we sold for homeownership. We purchased two single-family homes for some rental units that we're still managing, and we purchased two other homes that we renovated and fixed up and sold for affordable housing. So with the county's funding, this is what we were able to do, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to create housing opportunities that can be affordable to those that are having a hard time finding affordability in this market today. The reason why specifically I'm before you today to ask for this line of credits, the revolving loan fund to be renewed, is because we have some big plans coming up over the next three years, and one of which, maybe both of which, the county might recall, but one of which specifically the county is going to help us out with, it's known as our Washington Avenue Project, that's right across from Horton Park. Brick Capital owns about 17 acres of land, and we have been working towards creating that as a brand-new subdivision there, and so slowly we have been kind of gearing up for that project. And to recap, the county, along with the city and the state, are graciously able to put some funds into the infrastructure of that development. So we were, in November of 2022, able to get $950,000 from the state of North Carolina for the infrastructure needed for that site. In addition to, the city of Sanford is going to be putting in 850,000, and the county will also be contributing 850,000 to that project. And in addition, since then, I've been able to secure funding from Golden Leaf Foundation of $450,000 that is going to go towards the infrastructure to this site, which, by the way, is very rare for Golden Leaf. I'm sure that many of you know, most of their projects are geared more specifically towards economic development, but they took kind of a leap of faith when I spoke to them about helping us out creating housing that is going to be going towards working families there that, again, in this market, it's hard to find workforce housing there. And so we're going to be creating that opportunity. So on that site, we're going to be creating over 50 single-family homes, as well as a 16-unit apartment complex that will all go over there on that 17-acre site. In addition, there's another project over in the Jackson Heights area of town to where we got funding of close to $5 million from the state of North Carolina. That's going to be going into some infrastructure cost over there. That will be used for some neighborhood revitalization. We're going to be resurfacing the road, creating a multi-use path, but in addition, Brick Capital owns another nine acres over there, so that's going to allow us to create 20 to 25 single-family homes over there on that site. With these projects in mind, this is the reason why I wanted to request a renewal. We see the opportunity to continue to leverage the county's funding that you so graciously gave to our organization in a way that's going to allow us to create even more housing units. Again, 75 single-family homes between those sites, as well as that small apartment complex that we're going to be building. So we look forward to the opportunity to create more housing and make sure that it is affordable to all income levels throughout the county. So this is my request, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Questions for Kerry? Start with Commissioner Martin.
Thank you for sharing the history, and thank you for your work in, in, in housing in general. It sounds like you do a lot of different programs, and so thank you for that. And for your warm welcome, I am new, and so as I was looking over your letter and some of the work that you do on your website, the only question that I have in regard to the Washington Avenue Project, and possibly now in regard to the Jackson Heights, is are the applicants for these homes necessarily, are they limited to Lee County residents? Or are they Lee and Chatham County? Or what is the criteria for the applicants?
That's a good question. So not necessarily. I will say the vast majority of even the housing we have I will say the vast majority of even the housing we have been able to provide, 90% are already Lee County residents, I would say. But if you're asking specifically, do we include stipulations on where people live? Not necessarily. But I would say by the nature of our programs and where we're building, 90% of the people that we serve and sell our homes to are already Lee County residents. They're usually renting. Again, the majority, probably 90% of our homebuyers are first-time homebuyers as well.
I, I'm somewhat familiar with the, the work in, this type of work. I used to work with Housing for New Hope in Durham. So I, I'm familiar with, with the need for affordable housing. But as a, as a Lee County Commissioner, I'm also concerned about our residents, right? And so I personally would like to see a conversation growing around being focused on, on Lee County residents, and even a definition really of, of what is a resident. I know in programs that I've worked in before, we could say someone was a resident if they rented an apartment here for six months, right? But then, we're not really focusing on the need within our community. And I, I personally, as, as, as a Lee County resident, would like to see a high priority on, on our residents here. I'd love to see, you know, people that have come out of generations of not owning homes have the ability to have, to be in that program, rather than seeing people not in Lee County coming to that program.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I would be very open to that conversation. As mentioned, we just haven't been intentional with defining residents, but I can tell you, again, the vast majority of those that we build and sell for are already Lee County residents.
It may be a problem when you take state, federal funds about limiting which counties they come from, so that may be hard for them to do.
That is definitely something that would need to be looked into.
Yeah. Happy to have that conversation.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick.
No questions, but Kerry, thank you for what you and your organization do for our area.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Commissioner Connect.
Which, which project, there was a, an emphasis on, on police and teachers at one point, or on a particular section.
Yeah.
Is that still a?
That is. That's still something that we emphasize when we have our homebuyers' education. We educate on the different programs that are available out there, specifically for programs that are for teachers, firefighters, police officers, things like that. I can tell you that two or three of these houses that we built off of memory were specifically sold to Lee County teachers, in fact. So that's still something that we are emphasizing through our work.
Commissioner Vorbeck.
I just had a question on, I guess, the, so the first initial loan was $200,000 with 3% interest over three years, so that was paid back. Am I understanding this correctly?
The interest has been paid. The $200,000, they have not paid because Mr. Kerry reached out to me about their renewal, and just the timing that we could get it on the agenda of the public hearing. We just decided to let him hold the funds until the board made a decision.
Okay, because I, so renewing made it sound like they were asking, you were asking for another $200,000. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand, so now, so you still have the $200,000?
That's correct.
Okay. And the interest has been paid?
We've been making interest-only payments, yes.
Like a line of credit with a business?
That's correct.
I'm following this now. Okay, so that same line of credit, so you're not asking for an additional $200,000?
That's correct.
Okay. But the interest will change from 3% to 6%? And then, so then just that interest-only payment will obviously be made, and then it's still a three-year term?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves.
I just want to know if you're occurring on your payments?
I, I think we are. I was just talking to the county manager about that, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp.
No questions, but thank you for what you're doing for the people in need. And affordable housing is a, should be a priority, you know, for the county. So thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the county's commitment to affordable housing through this loan and through the Washington Avenue Project that we'll be working on here soon.
Kerry, could you please describe the difference that this program will provide when you're talking about land ownership and the actual house ownership?
Sure. So you're, you're right, Chairman Smith. We still have this idea of, of, I think what you're talking about is a community land trust with the Washington Avenue site. So a community land trust, I think I've talked to the Commissioners before about this, it's the idea of making sure that housing is affordable on an ongoing basis. Because part of the problem with affordable housing is when we build and have built and sold houses, it's oftentimes just affordable to that first-generation homebuyer. But unless there's some deed restrictions in place, and some of our housing has had that deed restriction in place, it, the, whenever they sell that house, it wouldn't necessarily be affordable to that next-generation homebuyer. But back to the community land trust. A community land trust is a model that you can find throughout the country. And here in North Carolina, there's Durham Land Trustees, there's Community Home Trust in Chapel Hill. So there, there is a model that already exists to where instead, instead of selling both the land and the sticks and bricks, the house, if you will, you are leasing the land to that family, and then you are selling them just literally the sticks and bricks. So by doing so, you are controlling, it allows an organization to control that pricing, and, and that way it can be affordable on an ongoing basis. We would enter into a, what's known as a shared equity model. So when that family goes to sell the house 10 years down the road, instead of collecting 100% of the equity, you know, what they bought for it's less what they paid the mortgage down versus what it's valued at at the time of sale, instead of collecting 100% of that equity, we would do like a 50-50 split to where that family would get 50% of the equity, and the other 50% of the equity, we would pass on to that next-generation homebuyer so that it is affordable to them. And so we want to do that, and still are planning on do that, once we get the Washington Avenue and Jackson Heights programs going, especially because, if for no other reason besides the ongoing nature of, of that affordable model, because we are getting a number of public funds in place, we want to make sure that we are, are good stewards of those funds and that we are able to create some perpetual affordable housing kind of under that model. So that, that's a good reminder. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I will now open the public hearing for loan renewal from the revolving loan fund to Brick Capital Community Development Corporation. What I would like is anyone that would like to speak on behalf, please come forward, state your name fully and your address so that the clerk can capture the information. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Johnson. My address is 107 North 16th Street, Jackson Heights, and I am employed with Family Promise of Lee County. We're a nonprofit for families, homeless families. And some of you might recall, three years ago, I spoke with you all advocating to purchase a home, affordable home, with Brick Capital. I was in their subsidy housing, low-income, Section 8. They gave me a chance, they rented to me. They also informed me about their homeownership program. So I did the homeownership program free of charge. Amazing program. They helped me to do what I need to do with my credit. I did that. The program worked well for me. So I really think that this fund should be renewed for Brick Capital. It's very important to people like myself who want to become homeowners, because thanks to your funding and Brick Capital, as of February 28th, I will be a homeowner for two years at Jackson Heights. So when you decide on your funding, funding, please take my journey in consideration, going from low income to affordable home ownership. It's a blessing. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Anyone else in favor or opposed? Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Sharon Reed, and I work at 822 South Hunter Boulevard here in Sanford. I'm the housing counselor. I actually live in Chapel Hill, so I drive down two days a week to work with the clients here. I am a HUD-certified housing counselor. I'm working one-on-one in the classroom, as well as in the regular sitting at Brick Capital with hard-working families with the ultimate dream of homeownership. Three years ago, you provided funding from your revolving fund. That fund made homeownership a dream come true for many families. And you've heard the story of Ms. Johnson, as well as other deserving families who are not able to come here that have benefited from those funds. I'm here first to say thank you on behalf of those families. Thank you for committing to affordable housing in Lee County and keeping it at the forefronts of your mind by supporting an affordable housing organization such as Brick Capital. Thank you for remembering that families like Ms. Johnson not only deserve and desire to have a home of their own, but they also take it a step further, and they work very hard to make sure that their dream comes true. Our mission is to serve the families that we provide daily housing counseling services to in an equitable manner. We do that by providing homebuyers' education on a bimonthly, on a bimonthly schedule, and one-on-one counseling in English as well as in Spanish, which includes budgeting counseling as well as credit counseling. We prepare our families for not just how to get a home, but we prepare them to be able to keep their home long-term. I'm proud to share that last year, last fiscal year, we provided services to over 240 families. And that's not just for homeownership, but that's in general on the programs that Mr. Bishaw spoke about. Over 100 of those families were committed to buying their first home, and many of them want to build in the developments here in Lee County. Our program requires continuous financial support. Renewing our funding source would potentially allow many more families to purchase their first home. So I ask that you remember the families that you have assisted in the past, and think of the future of the families who want to buy their first home here in this area. Please consider my words as you make your decision, and please vote to continue the funding source for us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for? Anyone against? Anyone else for, against? Going once? Going twice? I now close the public hearing. Thank you very much. We will be bringing this before our board on December 16th at our next meeting. Next item on the agenda, there are no public comments. Under Old Business, we have the Planning Board Recommendations on Zoning Map Amendment, Rezoning Request. And before we go any further, I will read the Conflict of Interest Rezoning Text Amendment Statement. "A governing board member shall not vote on any legislative decisions regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to Chapter 160D, where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. A governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property is subject to a rezoning petition or the application, excuse me, the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the member has close familial business or other associational relationship. Does any board member at this time have a conflict?" Seeing none, we'll continue. Thank you, Amy McNeil. Go.
Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon, I should say. My name is Amy McNeil. I'm a planner with the Sanfordley County Planning Department, and I process rezoning requests. So I'll come for, before you almost every month with a joint public hearing with the Planning Board and the Commissioners regarding a rezoning request that someone has made. This information is on pages 89 through 98 of your agenda packet, and the Planning Board met on November 19th after the joint public hearing with the county Commissioners was held, and recommended by unanimous vote that the Commissioners approved the request to rezone a 4.93-acre portion of a 16.66-acre tract of land with frontage on White Hill Road from Highway Commercial HC to Residential Agricultural RA to match the existing RA zoning at the front of the parcel and to allow the subject property to be used in a residential manner. This recommendation was based on the request being reasonable and in the public interest, given that the rezoning site is located at the rear of a parcel already zoned residential agricultural along the front. The majority of the land uses in the area are residential or agricultural, and it would prevent the establishment of uses that are not in harmony with the area. Topics of discussion included that the request aligns with the adopted long-range land use plan, and that a residential land use makes sense at this location. As a reminder, the Commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference, and Commissioners are always welcome to draft a unique motion if preferred. Also, the Commissioners may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan Sanfordley Long Range Plan, and still vote to approve the request. The sample motions start on pages 90 for your reference. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Amy? Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
None.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Uh, no, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions. No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No questions.
Okay. Seeing there are no questions, do I have a motion?
To make a motion that the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Plan Sanfordley Long Range Plan as a nation of countryside because it lists RA as the primary current zoning district and residential working lands as allowable land uses.
Motion's been made on option one, which is I make the, the motion to the proposed zoning map is consistent with Plan Sanfordley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to the second.
And then I make a motion that the Planning Board approve the proposed zoning map amendment from Highway Commercial to Residential RA or Residential Agricultural RA because it's reasonable given the rezoning site location.
Motion's been made to amend the zoning map for a request for vacant land with frontage on White Hill Road from Highway Commercial to Residential Agriculture. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Have a good day. Next item on the agenda is the Lee County Historic Courthouse Repair Bid Acceptance. Brandon Key.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'm here to present the bid for the Historic Courthouse and give a brief summary and background. So Lee County was approved for the Emergency Supplemental Historic Preservation Fund Grant from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources Offices back in March of 2022. This is repairs for the Historic Courthouse. Additional grant funding was provided by the state in September of 2024. So Lee County has been working with Hobbs Architects and the State Historic Preservation Office to identify repairs needed on the courthouse for design for the repairs, the bidding process for these repairs. The main priority for the Historic Courthouse includes roof replacement, along with masonry repairs on the exterior brick and brownstone. The goal is to ensure the exterior is watertight, and repairs restore the building to the original construction as close as possible. So Lee County held the project bid period September 16th through October 10th, 2024, and received six bids. The low bidder is Herod and Associates Constructors Incorporated, with a combined bid base and alternates of $1,212,100. Hobbs Architects and Schippo have reviewed the bid submission and verified references provided. Based on this, Hobbs Architects recommends Herod and Associates Constructors as the general contractor for Lee County Historic Courthouse Repair and Renovations Project. Lee County is in agreement and asks for the Commissioners to approve and accept this bid submission, and if you approve, we will begin work on contract execution. I can take any questions.
Questions for Brandon? Commissioner Martin?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Did we add a, did we have a, is this in our, like, capital improvement, or was this already an idea ballpark range of what we'd be, this would come in at?
Yes.
Okay.
With additional grant funds, it's allowed us to be able to do more of the project that we originally planned to do.
Okay, so this was already, we already had funding, an idea earmarked for this, correct?
Yes. We received the original grant, what here, did you say? I can't remember.
I can't remember.
I have it. 873.
Yeah, I knew the amount. It's going back to the day.
September 24th, okay.
The second round was September 24th. The original grant was March of 22.
Correct.
Okay. That's what, I thought it had been longer than September.
It has. It's been, it's difficult sometimes working through the state agency with some of their grants and stuff, and this has been a trying one, and the funds did not, with inflation like everybody else is facing, it's made it tough to get the project in at what we were hoping and be able to do for, of what we were hoping to do.
Okay, good.
And it still leaves a few things off the table that were in the original grant application.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
Not about the project, about the architect. Would that happen to be Fred Hobbs?
Uh, it's Grim Hobbs out of Pittsburgh.
Which one?
Grim Hobbs out of Pittsburgh.
Okay. Now I look for Fred. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions, thank you.
All right. Seeing there are no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the lowest bid?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion's been made to approve the lowest bid submission for Lee County Historic Courthouse Repair Project from Herod and Associates Constructors Incorporated with a total contract amount with alternates at $1,212, excuse me, $1,212,100. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Budget Amendment Number 12022407. Jen Waterhouse? Actually Candace is here.
Yes.
On behalf of Jen, thank you.
I will handle any questions in relation to the budget amendment.
Questions? Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, thanks for pulling this off of the consent. I just wanted to flush out a little bit about what the plan is for this, this funding, specifically the $1,750. So it's my understanding that that was monies that was set aside for a broadband match grant, correct?
Correct.
And it's possible that that match might be met by the state, if I understand correctly?
Yes. House Bill 10 did pass.
Okay. Okay. So if we put this monies into our general fund, and then we will have that, that monies to decide how to spend that before the end of the year, or possibly it could go into general fund if we don't allocate it before then, is that correct?
We have to, we have to obligate it before the end of the fiscal year, and so then what we will do is, I'll let Ms. Mentor take over.
Okay. Let me, I'm sorry, this all started before Candace and I switched, changed positions around and stuff. So the $1,750, what we're doing here is re-obligating it, okay, between this and the next action. So we can use those funds towards salaries because it has to be obligated by December 31st of this year, okay? So when we found out we were no longer going to have to match the CAB grant, we can suck short notice, the easiest thing for us to do is to move it back to salaries. And so we have enough in sheriff's salaries to cover, to use it up more than enough. And so that will free up that money in our general fund of which you then will be able to allocate to something that you want to do. So this action, these two actions today, and this budget amendment and the ordinance adjustment, will allow those funds to get moved and be obligated for the salaries in the sheriff's department. And then later, we'll be coming back to you once we know for absolutely for sure that the state does not change anything on us again between now and December 31st. Then we'll be coming back to you probably at the retreat to see if there's anything you want to do. We have a million five of these type of funds that are already set aside for mental health. There may be some other things that the board wants to take on, and we'll be able to discuss those once we know for sure that we don't have to put this match in for this grant.
That makes sense. Thank you. And I want to take a moment to celebrate the fact that we've, you've just found, you know, a million seven, so $1,750. So thank you. I just wanted to have that clarified just so that conversations in the public can, can happen around that if needed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have questions about any of the other items on the budget?
No, thank you.
Right. Thanks.
Questions? Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Uh, no, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Do I have a motion to approve Budget Amendment 12022407?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve Budget Amendment Number 12022407. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the CSL FRF Grant Project Ordinance Number 7.
This is the grant ordinance to allow us to do what we were just talking about. It's the other side of it in the grant fund where it allows us to transfer the $1,750 over to the general fund.
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
So to say that just the rest of these project codes have already been approved, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No more questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to pass the, or to accept the CSL FRF Grant Project Ordinance Number 7?
Motion to accept.
Motion's been made, and the acronym is Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds is hereby amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. We have no new business. Managers Report, October 2024 Monthly Financial Report. Candace?
You have before you the October 2024 Monthly Financial Report. The add-to-law on tax collections are at 22.56% of our adopted budget. The target for expenditures at this point in the fiscal year is 33.33%. Due to the inclusion of encumbrances, several departments are over this target. However, if encumbrances are removed, the departments that remain over this target are due to the annual payments of maintenance or service agreements.
Questions for Candace? Commissioner Martin?
None.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you, Candace.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Managers Report, Board Retreat Updated.
Yes, sir. As you all know, the board retreat this year will be working on revising our strategic plan, and we will be working with the North County Association of County Commissioners on that project this time. And the two people that we'll be working with are Donna Sharp and Amy Cannon. I have placed their resumes in the agenda package for you all to review, so you'll have some information about them and to let you know that they'll be reaching out to ask you all some questions between now and the board retreat. So I wanted you all to have some information about them so you know who you're talking about. Both of these ladies have vast experience in county government, which we hope will bring a additional enhancement to our strategic plan so that, and we want you all to be aware of what their knowledge was. Okay? Any questions?
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Sharp?
No, I have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
What's the date for the?
The retreat, the first two days will be the 9th and the 10th. That'll be that evening on the 9th for our dinner, and then on the 10th, we'll have sessions until about 2:00, I believe. And then we'll be again on January 31st from about 8:30 to, to, again.
The 9th and the 10th of?
January. Sorry. Yeah, we had originally planned to do it in December, and it was going to conflict with the Essentials of County Government class for new Commissioners. And so Donna and Amy both were going to be involved in that, so we had to change the dates. And then, of course, that was the event that was going to be in the western part of the state, so that's now gotten moved, but we did not want to change our agenda dates again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Question for Lisa. How much is this going to cost the county?
No charges from the Association of County Commissioners for this.
So the strategic plan process is going to be free to us because of the association?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing further there. Commissioners' comments? Commissioner Martin, feel free.
Well, thank you. I'm delighted to be here. I feel like I sit in a seat of, that'll be hard to replace, but I'm specifically looking forward to working with, with everyone here on the board, with Lisa and her team, who have been more than welcoming already. So thank you, and I look forward to the next four years.
Commissioner Lovick?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to be sitting next to you. First of all, thank, thank you for the voters that had the confidence in me and trust in me to let me, as another four years, I honor and appreciate that. I don't take it lightly, and I give God all the glory and honor and praise for that. And with his help, that being said, I'm still human, but I will do my very best the next four years. And, but I do want to thank this board for support of the affordable housing things we're talking about. That's one of the major things that I'm hearing is the county commissioners, affordable housing, so I appreciate our commitment to that. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Congratulations on the winners on this election, and thank you for the confidence in us here again. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving, too.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Agree. Hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Congratulations to Samantha being on the board, and welcome back Mark and Cameron. Looking forward to the next at least two years I get to work with you guys, and hopefully more beyond that.
Commissioner Reeves?
Good to see everybody, and hope you had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I'll get my Merry Christmas in now just in case my memory is not what it used to be. So I would also like to ask if, when are we going to try and meet with the city regarding development?
We did discuss development with them at the interlocal meeting, and we can share some of that information that we obtained there with you. If you want to schedule a full board meeting, we'll need to have that discussion, if we want to have a full, a full board meeting with them.
I know it's not news, but Lee County is getting pretty crowded in terms of transit, traffic and, and building. Almost everywhere you turn, there's a new development popping up. And quite honestly, for example, right down here across from the school, anybody have any idea what they're doing there?
That's, those are townhomes they approve, wasn't it townhomes? They approved like a year and a half ago.
Fire Tower Road?
Yes, sir. Like what they're clearing right now. I think it's, I want to say it's like 30.
Oh, on the corner.
Yeah, they're, they're filling in the pond. I think it was like 32 townhomes or something, or maybe, don't, please do not quote me on that.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Nancy? Richard?
I'm, I'm pretty positive they were the townhomes that got approved. It's been like a year.
Right there, the stoplight on the corner?
Yes, sir. Across from the other residential.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Amy, Amy McNeil, could you help us in this? Some of us don't have.
At the intersection of Fire Tower Road and Tranway Road, they're simply filling that pond and clearing it as a marketing strategy for development because they feel that people can't envision it being developed otherwise until it has, until it's a big green grassy area. So no rezonings have been proposed at this time, and no development has been proposed at this time. But I did reach out to the property owner to get that confirmation because I've had several inquiries. There are townhomes being developed a little further down Tranway Road. Those are actually under construction in an area that already has a lot of residential single-family development.
Okay. I thought that's right where those were going.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And while you're up there, how many houses are they building behind my house?
I don't know the exact number, but I could get you an answer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp, comments?
I trust everybody had a good Thanksgiving, at least I hope you did anyway. And I just want to welcome Commissioner Martin to the board and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, sir. I, I too would like to welcome our new board member as well as our re-elected members. We appreciate your efforts and your desire to serve Lee County, and I think it's a commend, a commitment to your commitment to our county. Again, glad everyone was back safely from Thanksgiving. If you traveled, if you didn't, I trust you have plenty of leftovers to savor for the next couple of days. But I have nothing further. Glad to have everybody back safely. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion's been made to adjourn. Any following, any further discussion? Seeing none.